Hey, I think we're live.
Alright, I'm gonna mute then. Are you, oh, so I'm sharing, correct? Yes.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay. No video.
I have the stuff ready though, so if we need to switch at any point, just let me know.
Yeah, so I've got the bid opening right at 4:30. So I'm gonna run and then I may jump back on. So if I... If I were to leave, you, let's see what participants say.
It says on here, I'm the host and you're the co-host. So it should be fine.
Yep, yep. So it should be good. Let me just... Allow panels to rename if they want. Alright, I just, you'll have to do your webinar settings, I think, because yours were set up for anybody to chat, whoever. So I just switched that over.
Need to do that now?
No, I just changed it, but like in future ones.
Oh, got it.
And you don't have to go in and actually manually change it.
Okay.
Okay, what else, what else, what else? I don't know who else needs to be on. This fake just chatted me and was like, are you sending the link over? And I was like...
She's not speaking. I don't think so. It should, like, it should just be Dr. Kelly Cabinet Board, probably Jim and Jeannie. Think, I think that's it.
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Hi, just FYI, we are streaming live on YouTube. So, when it started already. Love the pearls.
Oh, I love your pearls, Ebony.
I'm so excited about today.
Me too. I was just in tears a few minutes ago.
I think I started crying when he was walking out of, like, Blair House to the church. Like, I have been emotional all day. Ebony, I love your pearls.
Thank you. Hey, Michael. I need to take this call. Are you able to start the webinar? Do you want me to start it now?
Uh, I'm able to do it, but, uh... We can, we can start it now.
Okay, thanks.
I see John. Hey, John.
Hi, Cheryl. Joan's gonna... That is. Joan's gonna lead today's meeting, but then I will take over if she needs to leave before.
Okay.
I think we're the only two board members online right now.
I see Catherine.
Okay.
Oh, that's not gonna work.
Was Shari the only one that wasn't able to make it?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Gavin's here. So it looks like we're missing Rob and Holly. Oh, got a text from Holly. She's having difficulty logging in.
Should we give her a minute or should we start? I know we're pretty tight on time.
That is up to you.
Yeah, we do need a quorum, so, you know, we can start with public comment, I guess, and...
We have a quorum.
Oh, we do. Okay, I can't see. Okay, so yeah, we should, we should go. We should start.
Alright, then, we'll go ahead and get started. I would like to call this meeting of the D-97 Board of Education to Order. Today is January 20th, 2021, and the time is 3:32. Cheryl, please call the roll.
Lavelle?
Here.
Kim?
Here, sorry.
Carney?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Spurlock?
Here.
Oh, yay, and Braymeier? Mark Kim absent, and Moore is also absent.
Okay, then we will move into public comments. Just a heads up for the audience. We will read 15 minutes of public comments and then finish the comments at the end for whatever we have left. We do have a number of time restrictions, both from board members and administration. So we want to be cognizant of getting through the material. But the comments will be read at the end and they'll also be logged into the notes. So I, I don't know. Yes?
Sorry, this is Catherine. So are we still going to be asked to vote or approve something, even though we won't be able to hear all of the public comments?
Um, I have, we should have all read them, so...
When would, when should we all have read them, since they've been coming in all day?
I'll be, I don't know.
I just have a problem with us not reading the public comments ahead of something that the public is asking us to listen to their feedback on. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but...
I mean, we've, I don't want to get too much into it, but, I mean, we have been debating a plan since October. I understand some of the comments are specifically about the metrics or about specials, but I've read most of them in between my 5,000 meetings today, and I don't think that, for the majority, I've heard things that are new. I understand that, I do try to read all of them when I can, but I have to teach at a certain time today, and so I can't stay... We'll never get through the material from the meeting, so I don't, I don't know if any other board members have thoughts they want to share on it.
I would also confirm that this is a precedent that has been set primarily, you know, we had, we moved our board meeting up six days in advance. We originally planned to have this conversation on January 26. We moved it up six days in order to give more urgent feedback. I have read all of the emails, and I concur with Joan that a lot of it, some of it was not going to even be addressed at this meeting tonight. And so I do feel comfortable with us moving forward, knowing that those emails are, we'll have a board meeting on the, on other days too, but I feel comfortable with what I know now and also making a vote.
I don't know if you're leaving for feedback from everyone, but same here. I've also read them all and agree with that assessment.
I do too.
Okay. So I think then we'll proceed. I don't recall if there was an order for the folks who are going to read the public comments.
So, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gavin and I, I'm gonna, that's okay, I'm gonna start, and we divided them up, and then Gavin will conclude. We're just going in order, yep, we're gonna go in order of the, when they came in, and we try to, you know...
Profital question then. If, if I don't feel comfortable based on the fact that I don't feel like I have enough information, how does, how does that work? Do I abstain from the vote?
Cheryl, 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 do you mind, Cheryl?
Who have been doing remote learning all day, so I have not had a chance to read all 30 or 40 comments, however many it may be.
Hi Catherine, this is Cheryl. You have, you have the right to abstain during the voting, or you can vote against the item that is brought to the table. Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay, and so how does that work if my vote would be considered quorum?
It's that, we have five people.
Yeah, we would have quorum without you.
Okay, even if people have to leave. Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna get started. Dear members of the board, first of all, thank you for your service. This is not an easy job during these crazy times. So many meetings and issues to ponder. I salute you for the hard work and dedication. As a D-97 parent of three kids that are thriving during remote learning, two 4th graders at Irving and a 7th grader at Julian, I've been deserved in my thoughts on the back-to-school plan. In my mind, this was not about my kids, but rather for the benefit of the kids that are struggling. I don't think I was alone in this thought, as I heard the public comments read about kids and their challenges with remote learning, while others fine with remote learning, were mostly silent. However, after learning about the final plan, I cannot be silent anymore. I question why we are attempting to disrupt a learning, remote learning program that's working for so many. Why are we placing so much burden on our teachers to learn how to reteach again, now livestream in and in-person, as well as the health risk? However, after learning that so few of our African-American families are choosing hybrid, why are we pursuing plans that move us backward on educational equity, rather than focusing on continuing to improve the remote learning experience? Instead, why not only continue to serve the highest needs kids in person? I continue to hear how students are falling behind in reading and math and thus need in-person. I just don't see how in-person school under COVID will improve if teachers can't work with students individually. We need to be honest with families on what to expect and to be reasonable in the outcomes. However, the most concerning part of the new plan is the loss of live specials for 4th and 5th graders and possibly all grades. This plan takes away time with their teacher for art, music, library, and Spanish. This is a special time for many kids, the opportunity to connect with their teacher, play their harmonica, sing, and engage in art. There is such a difference between a live music class and watching a video of what is supposed to be done. So many kids will have no art or music unless it is offered live by the district. I've also heard that chorus, band, and orchestra lessons are in question. We all saw the beautiful video that D-97 kids made for the holidays. This all goes away for the 4th and 5th graders under this current plan. I think many of us were silent because we never saw hybrid as a reality in D-97, with the prior metrics too hard to achieve, or maybe more of us would have raised our voice of concern and supported the status quo. But now the metrics used by D-97 have changed, and hybrid is looking more like a reality than, than ever before. I know D-97 staff have put in uncountable hours, number of hours in the new plan. I ask of you to reconsider this direction, or at least find a way to provide our students with live music and art classes. For these 5th graders, this is the last year that they have art and music specials, since once they enter middle school, they have to choose one. Thus, it's more important than ever to provide these kids with live classes in both art and music. I hope each board member is not silent this afternoon, like the last meeting, where only one question was asked of the plan, but rather asked the hard questions like you usually do, and continues to find creative answers to meet the needs of the D-97 community. Thank you, Susan Raphael. Hello, my name is Molly Hurtel, parent to two children in D-97 Hatch and Brooks. First, I want to thank you for your continued work to develop a hybrid plan that's responsive to the community feedback and flexible to the changing environment of this pandemic. I realize this is uncharted territory for all of us. I did want to express my dismay at the recent shift away from looking at community spread metrics. When we completed the hybrid learning survey for our kids, we were under the impression that the district would be accounting for the level of community spread in its decision to shift to hybrid. It came as quite a surprise last week to see that the district was going to change their metrics or abandon them completely after asking parents to make a decision about hybrid. Since that time, I've reviewed the cited paper. As the district moves away from these metrics of community spread, I sincerely hope there's a commitment to implementing most of the rigorous standards laid out in the paper, including achieving, quote, achieving four to six air changes per hour of clean air through any combination of ventilation and filtration or outdoor classrooms. How is the district, end quote, how is the district implementing this aspect of infection control in its buildings? The second one, quote, robust quarantine policies and contact tracing practices, and practices, end quote. How will, how will, how will we be transparent about what these policies are and who will be impacted if a student or teacher tests positive in the school or classroom? Will the district be implementing the recommended school-level infection control teams? How will districts support the school in this effort? The third one, quote, surveillance testing for educators, paraprofessionals, and other staff is recommended in order to reduce the risk of asymptomatic transmission, once the level of community spread has exceeded 20 per 100,000 daily new cases, end quote. I believe our community spread, calculated weekly, is nearly double that level. Therefore, is the district implementing this recommendation from the paper? If not, why not? Thank you again for your continued efforts. Sincerely, Molly Hurtel. Dear members of the board, my name is Sarah Boyle. I'm a 10-year resident of Oak Park, a teacher and director at the Summer Cast Program, and the wife of a teacher at Percy Julian Middle School. First, I want to thank each of you for responding to the Herculean task of navigating how to best operate our schools amidst an unprecedented pandemic, and to do so with so much thorough planning, hard work, and communication and grace. During the pandemic and the decisions we individually and collectively make are literally life-saving. I know the decision to shut our school buildings and to move to virtual learning was a very difficult one, and would have not been done unless you believed there was, in fact, a grave and real danger. I also know that although you plan to open our school buildings for students again on February 1st, that you must believe that there are still real dangers to doing so. Otherwise, why would the district still offer virtual options for families at all? It's clear that although there is very important learning that's happening virtually, the best, most equitable environment for learning is obviously still in our classrooms, if it is safe enough to do so. The question that I have for you is this: How safe is it to open our classrooms? It seems that by giving parents the option for their children to remain remote or to move to a hybrid model, we're shifting the burden of this decision on each individual family. Each family must examine the benefits and risks of continuing to learn remotely, and the benefits and risks of entering into the hybrid model, and decide for themselves what to do. How much responsibility do you believe that you have to help inform parents before they make this decision? And what information do you plan to share with them beforehand? Do you plan to tell them that although early studies in European countries suggested that it might be relatively safe to open school buildings, or recent studies within the United States have uncovered more risks? That a study from Tulane University and another from the University of Washington and Michigan State University have shown that when case rates and/or hospitalizations of COVID-19 are higher, that it seems like schools do play a detectable role in spread. In Michigan, 21 new cases per day per 100,000 residents in areas where schools were open led to increases in community spread. In Washington, the threshold where spread was observed was even lower, at five new cases per 100,000 per day. I could not collect information on Oak Park's caseload specifically on the IDPH website, but last week, River Forest, our closest neighbor, had 385 cases per 100,000, or an average of 55 cases per day per 100,000, all over the Michigan or Washington thresholds that predict opening school buildings would lead to greater community spread of this deadly disease. Additionally, this week in Illinois, we have seen our first case of the new variant from the UK B117, a variant that epidemiologists believe is even more contagious. Will you ask them to consider the potential trauma they may expose themselves to by possibly increasing the likelihood that those around them may die? Will we tell them that teachers and support staff have not been given an option to work remotely? They must all work in person, even if their age or medical condition puts them at high risk, and doctors have advised them to shelter in place. But by sending our kids to school, our students may be more likely to experience the death of their teachers. Also, because community spread may be greater, they may be more likely to experience the death of family members, friends, and neighbors that are still not vaccinated and are also high-risk. And if so, what support do the schools plan to offer those students who are in grief? Will you tell them schools are not planning to do any testing for COVID-19, that the schools, I'm sorry, is that a, Cheryl, is that...
That was time on that one.
Okay, thank you. That was signed by, I think she introduced herself at the beginning, Sarah Boyle. Dear board, I write as a parent of a 4th grader, an 8th grader, and a spouse of a District 97 employee. I have two issues I'd like to bring forward. Today, right after lunch, I saw my 4th grader disengage from his work and sink into his chair holding back tears. I asked what the teacher had been discussing. With tears going down his face, he started explaining that specials were moving to asynchronous afternoons. My son began cello lessons this year, and the realization that the lessons were likely ending, along with music, Spanish, and art, three of his favorite classes, had a devastating impact. The elimination of specials, which is the net result of specials becoming asynchronous, is unnecessary. We've gone through almost a full year of remote learning and have found a way to accommodate this important part of our children's lives. Focusing the face-to-face learning time and limiting it to reading, writing, and math isn't the best interest of the kids. It's in the best interest of those that are evaluated based on standardized test performance. While I'm not naive and aware that this new schedule exposes a truth that's been there all along, our schools have always maintained a balance that's missing from this plan, and accepting it will take Oak Park down a slippery slope for future prioritization questions. I would encourage everyone to reconsider this portion of the plan. Secondly, my wife, as a school social worker, was qualified to be vaccinated in Group 1A. We'll likely celebrate January 13th annually as Vaccination Day. This was, has greatly reduced our family's anxiety about her return to work. With teachers being included in 1B and Governor Pritzker's announcement that 1B will begin on January 25th, I'd encourage the board and administration to consider putting every effort into helping facilitate the vaccination process for teachers. Quote, "To date, the administration has been hands-off on the topic," and to think... and to think about pushing the date back for this return to school till everyone has a chance to at least get their first dose. While there will never be a perfect time to return until kids get, can get vaccinated, pausing for as little as four weeks will unquestionably save lives, reduce the risk for teachers and their families, and likely increase the number of teachers who decide to return to the classroom. Thanks for reading this and best regards, Derek Janichosek. From Jen and Dan George. We've been trying to write this email for too long. We are very close to seeing the rollout of the hybrid plan. My hope was that the health and safety of our children and teachers would be at the top of the priority list amongst the many needs that our community has to weigh in order to maintain the educational standards we expect within the current situation. Is our current model good? No. Nothing that is happening or not happening during COVID nineteen has been good. This is the fact of our current time. Life for many has become to a slow crawl and it's frustrating. We want to change it. We want to return to normal life. As we hit the one-year mark of this global pandemic, we need to come to terms that life may never go back to normal, certainly not in the near future. We must and will continue to adapt to whatever our new reality is. As a parent, my number one responsibility is to keep my children safe, which as a community member extends to all our children. Then how does this district in good conscience send our children back to classrooms with teachers who are being bullied into returning to an environment where it is impossible to eliminate the risk of death or debilitating illness due to COVID? So many of us moved to Oak Park for the schools. The schools are only as good, in our case excellent, because of our teachers. We've seen our teachers work tiring hours to create and adjust and recreate a workable educational experience for our children. What they have and continue to create has far surpassed anything I would have thought possible for remote learning. Is it perfect? No. Are our children falling behind? Perhaps, but ask yourself, to whom are they falling behind? We're all in this together. Our children are doing the best they can to be resilient in a time of trauma. Our teachers recognize this, and they know how important it is to this community and its families that their children continue to learn. They've already sacrificed so much more of their personal time and personal space than their contracts would require if they were working under one and all to protect, provide for our children. Our teachers deserve our support. They deserve to be safe and to stay healthy. How do our teachers create a safe learning environment for our children when they themselves don't feel safe? Sincerely, Jen and Dan George, parents of two seventh grade Julian students and one third grader from by school. I, I don't know when fifteen minutes is up. Do you guys want me to keep going?
By chance, I wasn't following that.
It's, it's close. So we could either do one, we could move on.
Your call. I'll, I'll do one more.
Okay.
One more?
All right. Yes.
Okay, my name is Patrick Bracco. I'm a resident, lives in the Whittier District. I will soon be a father of a child that will be a student within District ninety-seven. I submitted a public comment at the last board meeting in opposition to the hybrid in-person remote learning plan. I'm writing again to express my disappointment in our school board for not asking any questions associated with the plan that was presented. I have friends who have students in the district as well as teachers, and it's apparent from your actions as a board that you do not have the safety and well-being of both groups in mind with your plan. We recently saw the Chicago Public School System go back in person. They already have many cases at many schools. It's only been one week that they have had in-person learning. What's our rush for putting students and teachers back in buildings when the vaccine's around the corner? Infection rates are higher now in Oak Park than they were when our schools went to a full remote. What has changed that makes you feel comfortable now to send students and teachers back in person? Why are students being given the option to stay remote but not teachers? How is that fair? I grew up in Oak Park, married a woman from Oak Park and have chosen to start a family in Oak Park. Deeply disappointed that our school district and school board are making decisions that I believe go against what Oak Park stands for. The reality of the situation is we are exposing our children and teachers to a virus that's killing our residents. If we wait until the vaccine has been released, we are protecting those important groups. Why have weekly saliva tests not been addressed? Many businesses are requiring this to be done to return to work. Why are we not considering this? This is further proof that the district and the board have not thought through the logistics carefully enough. Large corporations are generally seen to be profits over people. Why are these same corporations making accommodations for their most valuable resources to continue to work remotely until a vaccine is rolled out successfully? Schools are institutions that are generally seen to have people's development at their core. What does it say about our school district if large corporations who are seen as evil by many who live in this district are acting in a better interest of people than the school system? Does the board realize that President Trump wanted schools to go back in person, prior to any vaccines being made available? Are we going to follow the recommendation of President Trump? What will the board and district do if a single child or teacher contracts and dies from COVID due to being in person at our schools? Again, I ask the following. What will the board and district do if a single child or teacher contracts and dies from COVID being, due to being in person at our schools? What will the board and district do if a pregnant teacher contracts COVID and that results in the loss of a child, a premature birth that results in undue complications to that child? Again, I ask the following. What will the board and district do if pregnant teacher contracts COVID and that results in a loss of a child or premature birth that results in undue complications to the child? Again, I ask, what is the rush? The new strain of the virus already here in Chicago, and that strain has been proven to spread at much faster rate, and the infection rate children specifically has increased. Why are we putting them at risk? Are families who plan to go back in person making a commitment to their community, they will not put others at risk? Will students continue to go to birthday parties and see others outside their immediate family? Will families continue to go on trips or vacation? Now, in no way am I saying that the district has the right to restrict students or teachers from living their lives, but shouldn't there be an understanding and commitment to keep others safe? And looking at the documentation that the district has made available, it states that students will be taking snack breaks outside. Are we really telling our students that they need to stand outside, eat a snack? February in Chicago makes a lot of sense for that. What if students don't have hat and gloves? Is that equitable if a student comes from a family that can't afford proper clothing? If snacks then are to be eaten inside due to weather, will the students eat in phases or at the same time? If at the same time, will they have their masks off? Okay. We will pick up after. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move into the special reports on the return to school plan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special update to the Board of Education. As requested as our, at our last board meeting, we wanted to have a touch point before we got to January twenty-sixth, which is our next board meeting. So we're going to go ahead and get started. If you can go to the next slide, please, Michael. I'm going to jump right into it. So on our update list for this afternoon is you will be hearing from our Safety and Security Manager, Mr. Jim Hackett. He will be providing the board and the community with update on the health metrics guidance. He will also provide the board with an update on the testing that we've looked into to screen our staff and students. I'm going to provide a little update on the vaccination planning, and we will jump right into what we've been doing from the district standpoint to help all of our buildings implement infectious control or mitigation strategies. And then finally, you will hear, I'm sorry, that's going to be presented by our wonderful Senior Director of Buildings and Grounds, Ms. Jeannie Keen. And finally, you will hear again from Michael Aaron Storff and Ebony Lofton regarding our schedule for trimester two. And then I will come back on just to give the board next steps. So let's go to, I'm going to turn the mic over to Jim Hackett. Jim?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So at the last meeting, we mentioned that we developed our original metrics guidance with a strong reliance on the document released by the Harvard Group, Path to Zero in Schools: Achieving Pandemic Resilient Teaching and Learning Spaces. On December nineteenth, the group released updated guidance, Schools in the Path to Zero: Strategies for Pandemic Resilience in the Face of High Community Spread. The updated guidance now recommends that schools can be open even at very high levels of community spread, provided that they strictly implement strategies of infection control. It supports the use of community spread metrics as general points of information, not as automatic triggers to close or delay the opening of a school. The guidance reinforces that schools need to focus their attention on developing ways to measure in-school transmission and the quality of their infection control regime. One of the medical professionals we consulted, Dr. Daniel Johnson, the Chief of Pediatric Infectious Diseases at the University of Chicago Medical Center, stated the following. You can't really establish an absolute threshold for saying that, oh, if you hit this number, that means you have to close. Closures could be necessary at lower levels of spread if mitigation protocols are ignored, while opening with a greater number of infections could be possible if strong rules are followed. Next slide, please. The, the following guidelines will allow District ninety-seven to track cases and outbreaks at a school level to provide flexibility to halt in-person classes on a more targeted basis. The guiding question that our school administrators will need to address on a daily basis is whether their school can achieve in-building safety and supportive in-person learning, regardless of the rate of community spread. To aid the decision-making process regarding schools reopening for in-person learning, Centers for Disease Control recommends the use of three core indicators, two measures of community burden, and the self-assessed measure of school implementation of key mitigation strategies, and the level of school impact. The levels of community spread will be reviewed weekly. The mitigation strategies and the level of school impact must be monitored daily to ensure that each building is safe for attendance. The mitigation strategies will be discussed later in the presentation, so I will focus the conversation on the core indicators and the level of school impact. District ninety-seven administrators will review the Village of Oak Park COVID nineteen status report. This report currently sent out on Monday, Wednesday and Friday provides a summary snapshot of the COVID nineteen situation in Oak Park, including the case incident rates for Oak Park and Cook County, as well as detailed information pertaining to the youth population of Oak Park. To further guide our decision-making process, we will also monitor the Region Ten positivity rate using the IDPH website. Next slide, please. The consideration for school impact. Schools open for in-person instruction should evaluate the level of the impact that the COVID nineteen transmission has had within their specific schools. The consideration should include the number of outbreaks experienced and their proximity and time to each other, the size of an outbreak, the number of cases and close contacts identified, the level of spread within the school, whether cases are confined to a particular classroom or grade level, the level of student and/or staff absenteeism due to illness, and the staff faculty capacity. These criteria and impact levels may change during the remainder of the school year, as we better understand how COVID nineteen impacts our schools. Next slide, please. The chart you are looking at provides a visual representation of the previous slide. I just want to clarify that some of the terms used in this chart, as well as in other parts of the metrics documents, for instance, outbreaks. On November fourth, twenty twenty, the CDC redefined the threshold levels for declaring an outbreak in an educational setting. Five COVID nineteen infections, laboratory positive by PCR or antigen testing occurring within fourteen calendar days of each other in individuals in the same, same classroom would meet the definition for an outbreak. This is because the cases would be epidemiologically linked by known exposure with respect to the place, the same classroom, and time, the fourteen calendar days. This would prompt an investigation by the Oak Park Department of Public Health that may result in recommendations for testing and quarantining all students and staff in the affected classroom. The student absenteeism baselines still need to be established. The recommendation is that these baselines are established using averages from previous years, but that piece still needs to be finalized. Staff capacity. This subjective assessment will factor in a school's ability to maintain adequate staff for facility operations, teaching, including substitute teachers, and administrative functions. The three levels, normal, strained and critical, are still being finalized. The level of transmission, when we talk about level of transmission, there is no threshold number we're looking at. It is more about identifying if the virus is evolving in the school setting and what factors are feeding that evolution. To date, there is no evidence to suggest that children or educational settings are the primary drivers of COVID nineteen virus transmission. It's important to note that transmission itself does not mean that, that in-person learning has failed. We have to distinguish between occasional transmission and an outbreak, between correct, correctable mistakes, which are transmissions that can be prevented with infection control measures, and non-correctable mistakes, such as viral spread dynamics that are beyond what we can be, what can be addressed in the school setting. Also, it's important to note that even when a school carefully plans and prepares, cases of COVID nineteen may still occur. Having detailed plans in place for the, for the occurrence of cases in schools can help quickly mitigate the impact and may allow our schools to remain open for in-person learning, if deemed appropriate, in collaboration with Oak Park Public Health. Next slide, please. While the risk of, while the risk of introduction and transmission in a school may be lower when community transmission is lower, the risk is dependent upon the implementation of school and community mitigation strategies. Vigilance to mitigation strategies within schools and the broader community will reduce the risk of introduction and subsequent transmission of COVID nineteen in schools. It is critical that schools deploy a layered mitigation strategy to create a safe environment that results in minimal transmission rates. The mitigation strategy is most effective if there are no deviations, but the layered approach allows our schools to maintain a safe environment, even if there is a minor deviation in one of those strategies. Even though research is ongoing regarding outbreaks, outbreaks in schools, it is reasonable to expect that those situations reflect breakdowns in systems of infection control. The most important elements of infection control are universal masking, hand and bathroom hygiene, indoor air ventilation and filtration, social distancing, quarantine policies, contact tracing, surveillance or screening testing where feasible. We will now go through each step of the infection control, control strategy to provide an update on what we have done to provide a safe learning environment. Jeannie Keen will discuss the first four items, and I will provide details on the remaining. Next slide, and Jeannie, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. The updated guidance recommends universal masking, including while speaking of all students and staff. To support this, we have supplied each school with a washable mask for all students and staff. We have an abundant supply of disposable masks in child and adult sizes that are available if needed or someone forgets one. We also have face shields available for any staff that has requested one. The second element is hand and bathroom hygiene, which we have installed touchless hand sanitizer dispensers in all classrooms and common spaces. We have installed CDC and IDPH stop the spread signs throughout the school and effective handwashing signs installed in all student and staff bathrooms. Next slide. The third point is indoor air ventilation and filtration. The group recommends achieving four to six air changes per hour of clean air through any combination of ventilation and filtration and/or outdoor classrooms. Our ventilation, ventilation system is designed to have three air changes per hour of clean air. We have increased this amount to five by opening the HVAC dampers and allowing a hundred percent outside air into the space as the weather allows. We also run the HVAC system at a higher outside airflow for two hours prior to student staff arrival and for two hours after the last scheduled shift of eleven PM and throughout the day. Filters are checked and changed monthly and noted in our preventive maintenance records database of school dues. We have selected MERV ratings that are maximized for our equipment capabilities using MERV thirteen when equipment allows. You can also increase hourly air changes by opening the windows as well. In addition, all of our HVAC equipment has been maintained and inspected for proper airflow. Next slide. The group also recommends, now recommends social distancing seating of three feet for all young learners at all levels, but we stayed with seating spaced six feet apart because we were able to do so in the classroom. We have social distancing floor reminders in place throughout all of our buildings. We have interior six-foot markings that assist with traveling throughout the elementary school buildings, and we have exterior six-foot markings that are being installed to assist with student lineup. Next slide. I want to thank the Communications Department, AKA Amanda, who put together a video to show some of the infection control and mitigation procedures that we have been putting into place at schools. So here you'll see universal masking and handwashing use and sanitation installed in all of the classrooms. Next slide. This is an example of our morning arrival lines that are spaced six feet apart. The ground markings will be installed next week. The other picture is an example of a socially-distanced fifth-grade classroom setup at Irving. Next slide. Buildings and grounds department has increased cleaning and sanitizing in all of the buildings. Bathrooms and high-touch surfaces will be cleaned throughout the day with a handheld electrostatic sprayer and an EPA-registered disinfectant, as shown in the first picture. During the arrival process each day, we will also be taking temperature checks with the assistance of school staff. I am now going to turn it back over to Jim to discuss the last two elements of infection control. Next slide.
Sorry about that. So quarantine policies. We will follow the COVID nineteen interim exclusion guidance provided by IDPH. The guidance is a matrix to guide the decision-making process for symptomatic and asymptomatic individuals. It provides recommendations for staff and students on the following. Should they be evaluated by a healthcare professional? What is the length of quarantine and what else needs to be met so they can return to school, such as no fever for twenty-four hours and improvement of symptoms? Should close contacts quarantine? And what documentation, what documentation is needed to return to school? We continue to monitor the IDPH and ISBE websites for updates. Next slide, please. Contact tracing. When a, when a COVID nineteen infection is identified- When a COVID-19 infection is identified among a student and staff member in a school, it is critical to conduct immediate contact tracing and identify all students and staff members who have been in close contact with this person. This should be done individually for each person identified with COVID-19 in the school, including laboratory confirmed and suspect cases. Contact tracing slows the spread of COVID-19 by identifying and notifying people that they may have been exposed, asking them to monitor their health, and asking them to self-quarantine. Timely and thorough contact tracing can effectively interrupt the chain of disease transmission and is an important public health intervention to prevent or contain an outbreak. Further transmission may be prevented by keeping those that may have been exposed to COVID-19 away from others. All close contacts to a confirmed case of COVID-19 will be placed in quarantine for fourteen days. Contact tracing will be directed by the Oak Park Department of Public Health in consultation with our district nurses. District ninety-seven administrators and our nursing staff attend weekly meetings with the Oak Park Department of Public Health to ensure everyone is operating with timely information. District ninety-seven will assist public health departments in knowing who may have had a contact at a school with a confirmed case by keeping accurate attendance records of students and staff members, ensuring student schedules are up to date, keeping a log of any visitors should we at any time include those, including date, time, and where in the school they visited, assisting local health department with contact tracing of school-based contacts in accordance with the protocol training and tools. Next slide, please. COVID-19 testing. The final recommendation is to provide COVID-19 surveillance or screening testing. Screening or surveillance testing can make infection control significantly easier and more effective and can restore trust in the safety of the environment. It can help stabilize an infection control regime by giving public health officials and school leaders full visibility into the prevalence of COVID-19 in the school community and can help identify potential failures of infection control more rapidly. The group recommends surveillance testing for educators, paraprofessionals, and other staff in order to reduce the risk of asymptomatic transmission once the level of community spread has exceeded twenty per one-hundred-thousand daily new cases. The group clarifies her statement by stating, "Testing infrastructures varies considerably across the country and from school district to school district, and disciplined implementation of infection control protocols can also serve to substantially reduce risk even in the absence of testing." The perfect should not be the enemy of the good, and the absence of testing should not be an obstacle to schools developing robust infection control procedures. Next slide, please. I have had conversations with representatives from two testing companies, Safeguard Surveillance, which the high school is using, and North Shore Clinical Labs. I'll provide a quick overview of each and provide a recommendation and validation for that recommendation. Safeguard Surveillance. This is the testing company that the high school is using. The process involves logistics at the district and school level and becomes increasingly complicated with the more buildings you add to the testing model. Safeguard provides test tubes and envelopes. Each school would need to run heat-resistant labels with limited identifying information such as simply the Power School ID. Affix those labels to the test tubes and package them for distribution to students. School staff would also need to obtain signed consent forms or waivers for every student. The samples are provided inside the students' residence and packaged in the collection envelope. That envelope would need to be returned to the school or a local collection box Friday or Saturday. The samples must be delivered to the lab in La Grange prior to nine AM on Sunday. They advise they can currently process two thousand samples per week for us, but the only day they have available for processing is Sunday. Their testing model is not a diagnostic test. It provides a presumptive positive result that would need to be validated by a PCR or diagnostic test. Cost. Cost is eleven dollars per test, and the recommendation is for weekly testing. Under the proposed attendance models, the cost to the district to test staff and in-person students for seventeen weeks, starting February first and excluding spring break, for a total of sixteen weeks, would be five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Next slide, please. North Shore Clinical Labs. They are a high-capacity molecular lab located in Albany Park that they're able to provide diagnostic PCR testing. Cost. There is no cost to District ninety-seven. The lab registers each patient directly and bills their insurance accordingly. There is no copay or out-of-pocket expenses. Under the CARES Act, insurance companies are obligated to pay for COVID-19 testing, and there is no limit to the number of tests a patient can complete. Uninsured or underinsured patients are serviced at the same levels. They would need to provide a driver's license or state ID, and the lab will seek reimbursement from the state. The state is funded through the Federal CARES Act for reimbursement on uninsured COVID-19 testing. CARES Act has been extended for another ninety days until the middle of April. Once the CARES Act funding terminates, which is not expected under the new administration, the testing would cease. Results. Results are shared directly with the patient and are available in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I asked them the following. If the staff provides a sample on a Monday, when would the results be available? The response, patients would start to see results late Tuesday and into Wednesday. All of their testing equipment is registered with IDPH. So when you see the testing numbers on the news, they are part of those testing numbers and have been for quite some time. If a significant spike in testing were to occur, test results could be delayed due to supply chain issues. A delay in reporting results did occur back in November, but the NCL representatives stated they remedied the issue, and there should be no issues with reporting results even during those elevated testing cycles. It's important to note that since the solution is an agreement between the patient and provider, District ninety-seven would not be notified of positive results. Those results, positive or negative, are sent directly to IDPH according to public health laws. So we would still be on a self-reporting platform for anybody who tests positive. Staff testing. They can offer onsite testing for staff at all of our locations. We would need to provide them with the number of people being tested, and they would staff accordingly. They have no problem with collecting seven hundred staff samples from across the ten schools and the district office. The recommendation for staff testing is once per week, and the process could be operational in a matter of days. Student testing. Student testing would operate as a pop-up clinic using the gymnasium at Julian. Attendees would enter through one of the doors, complete the registration at two to three tables on the north side of the gym, move to the center of the gym to provide samples, and then exit through the other door. We would start on a small scale on a Saturday from eight to two with seventy-five appointment slots per hour. Testing could be offered to students and their family members as well as staff family members. The appointment slots could be expanded to a hundred and fifty per hour if needed. We could also add in a Sunday or offer a block of testing after school. If we feel we are meeting the testing needs of our students, this testing option could be opened up to the entire Oak Park community. To control the amount of people at the testing facility, the company sets up appointment slots using Eventbrite. District logistics. North Shore Clinical Labs arrives with all the materials they need to conduct the testing. They are responsible for any biohazardous waste, which has not been generated during any of their other testing sites. We would provide basic logistics. We'd have to staff the building with a building engineer, tables, chairs, and access to Wi-Fi. And with this testing, if there is no interest in the testing program, we simply stop. There's no contractual obligation. And then, next slide, please. So our recommendation is to offer testing in partnership with North Shore Clinical Labs. The Safeguard Surveillance Test is an RT-LAMP test, and North Shore Clinical Labs is offering a diagnostic PCR test. The diagnostic PCR test is considered the gold standard. If there were presumptive positive in the Safeguard testing, that result would need to be confirmed by a PCR test. So it really comes down to what you're trying to accomplish with testing. From a logistics standpoint, there is no comparison. The impact is negligible with NCL and significant with Safeguard Surveillance. Another, the convenience of offering onsite testing to staff, the ability to offer the pop-up clinic that can expand is needed to meet the needs of our students and perhaps the greater community. And the final pieces is the cost. There are buildings and ground staffing costs for the Saturday offering, but other than that, the costs are negligible.
Thank you. Next slide, please. All right, so I think there were not many questions about the final schedule. I'm going to send Michael and Ebony to take the mic, and then I will just wrap up. Michael, Ebony?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Thank you, Jim and Jeanne, for that. That was very detailed, and we appreciate your work on that. For the elementary school schedule, again, minor changes, some information that came out with looking at an eight-to-twelve time. Again, that looks at the transportation and different, to be able to make all of that work and work with our schedule. So it would be eight to twelve in the morning for the in-person and remote, and then the group at home would be live streaming through that. Travel and lunch from twelve to one, and then the afternoon would be the asynchronous synchronous instruction that would take place. And I'll turn it to Ebony.
Yeah, so I'll move this through this pretty quickly. So we did hear originally a desire to provide synchronous instruction for our youngest learners in the afternoons from our community. They sounded, excuse me, a concern around students receiving Zoom instruction while onsite. So this required a change from our original special schedule proposal to one that placed specials solely in the afternoon. I have since had the opportunity to meet with our amazing teacher leaders on the specialist team, and we've made some changes based on their feedback. First, as Michael indicated, the change to onsite hours for elementary schools provides us with more time in the afternoon and provides synchronous opportunities for wider range of grade levels. So I want to thank again our amazing principal team, who worked tirelessly yet again to retool their master schedules, and I'm pleased to share that principals are working to provide synchronous learning opportunities for students in all grades. In addition, we also heard the call for district-wide common planning time for specialist teachers, and the principal team is also working to ensure that's provided. Next slide.
And then, this just gives a little bit more detail of what the hybrid school or schedule would look like. So we'd start out with a staggered entry at eight o'clock to eight-twenty, roughly. Again, those are some things that the buildings, as they communicate their schedule and the times and numbers and all of that, what that would look like per building. Then we'd start out the day reading, writing, ELA block, then followed by math. And then after that twelve o'clock time, again, the reading, writing, ELA would be, again, once they're in the classroom, it gets settled eight to ten forty-five, roughly, and then ten forty-five to noon for math. And then, again, all the students would travel home from twelve to one for lunch, and then that asynchronous. And then, as Ebony just talked about, with the specials and electives in the afternoon and different, again, synchronous-asynchronous work with the different subject areas with three o'clock being the end of the day for our students in elementary.
The middle school schedule has not changed since we last spoke, with the exception of the end time is now twelve forty-two. Again, accommodate our transportation needs and the ability for our buses to clean and transport students. So you'll see nine to twelve forty, in-person or remote. Twelve forty, the one forty is lunch and travel, one forty to three thirty is asynchronous instruction in that we still only have one grade level per week onsite for four days. And we can go to those next two slides that just illustrates the different grade levels. And as I said, there are minimal change with the end of the time changing to twelve forty.
Thank you, Michael and Ebony. So just to conclude, in terms of next steps, for our students that have been on site, we've been on adaptive pause since November. Those students are scheduled to return. Rather, the adaptive pause is scheduled to end on January the twenty-second. We will be welcoming back our staff to buildings on January the twenty-fifth, and we're planning for a transition to hybrid learning for students, transitioning first with our grades fourth and five students beginning on February first, and the middle schools will return according to their established schedule. We will be also creating a dashboard on our website to be transparent about our internal metrics. And then finally, I will just say that we are, on today's agenda, is the proposed calendar changes, which does include moving our conferences, which were originally scheduled for February fourth and fifth. On the calendar, it says TBD, but we are actually recommending to move the conferences to February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. So I'm just going to open the floor to any questions.
I do, I have a question. A question per se. I did have a question about the cost of the North Shore Clinical Labs. I think you put it on the slide, Jim, and if I missed it.
That on the slide, Michael?
Was it on the slide, and I didn't see it?
It did. It where it says no.
Oh, no cost. Okay, I'm not used to that. So, okay. I was looking for dollar signs. Okay, so no cost in District ninety-seven. I would let the, I'll seat the floor to others, but wanted to thank you guys for such an incredible presentation. It's very clear that you guys have put a lot of work and a lot of thought into our return to school, and we give you stuff to ponder and to explore, and then you come back. And in Ebony's case, you guys found a solution for something, and I don't even think we as a board knew you guys were looking into that solution. So I just want to personally, as a parent and as a board member, to just say thank you so much for the level of work you have put into this plan. I'm going to seat the floor to other board members who have questions.
So this is Holly. I had a question. I had two, just on the scheduling. I know that we, as part of the negotiation, we've talked to the teachers about using, doing the regular arrival time of seven fifty that we used before, and I still recognizing it'll take twenty minutes, but I thought that we were going to still do arrival at seven fifty. And I'm only saying that because I think that parents are going to start to plan for that drop-off, knowing that we can't allow kids in with inclement weather, and we can't allow, you know, freedom, quite as much freedom as we usually have before school, making sure that people know the exact right time that they can start arriving, I think will be important. And that's my understanding from the MOU that we are coming in at the seven fifty time that was before.
Gina, can you answer that question? Or Felicia, I know that Felicia's been chatting with the transportation company around those arrivals. And Gina, if you can just clarify when teachers will be on duty in the morning?
So teachers will report to school twenty minutes prior to instructional start, student instructional start, and they're going to assist with the safe entry and entry of our students.
And I would assume, Holly, that families will hear more information directly from their building principals to around, you know, when they can begin and what the procedures would be in terms of that lineup in the schoolyard.
Okay, the other thing that we've discussed with elementary is snack, and I don't see that on the schedule. Are we still doing a fifteen-minute quiet snack for elementary school kids?
Yes, we've talked about, and I think a question came up at the last board meeting regarding if the district would be providing to the schools a snack in case there are students that might forget their snack. So we have worked that out through our food services department.
Okay. On the safety, on the clinic, the two options, Jim, thank you for all that work. I know that there is almost a question, you know, a day when anybody has to decide whether and where to take their children to get a COVID test. So the idea that we might be able to offer kind of a go-to place for families, I think that is a unique idea that I know I didn't think was even like a possibility. So thank you for locating that. I will say the mail-in testing and that requirement, I didn't realize that it was mail-in too. So thank you for the information on Safeguard. How long do they need lead time to set up a pop-up clinic that will be able to use? And also, how many appointments can they take a day from our students and staff? What is their capacity, if we know yet?
Yeah, great, great question. So just to clarify, the Safeguard isn't a mail-in test that would have to be delivered back to the school and put in a bin or at a community location somewhere else. Anyway, for the staff testing, that could be up and running within a matter of days, literally. For the student pop-up clinic, they asked me to give them a week. So within a week, we could have that. And again, we would start with the seventy-five appointment slots and then expand as needed. And in that expansion, if we see that all seventy-five slots for that hour are booked, we can expand on the spot immediately, and they just throw some more technicians at it. So they're able to kind of move up and down as the needs dictate.
Okay. One of the things that you guys talked about was that, and the definition of an outbreak is five positive infections in fourteen days. When I looked at the IDPH outbreak website for schools, there is no schools that have had five cases, and they all have little green dots. And I think it's just important to highlight that that's what the data is showing in Illinois. And so I know they're using the word outbreak, but it sounds like if we use the CDC definition- I know they're using the word outbreak, but it sounds like if we use the CDC definition. Um, I don't think we're seeing, I think the point is that there's not, we're not seeing evidence of outbreaks. Related to schools in the area or in all of the Chicagoland area. So I appreciated um hearing that definition.
And I will say, Holly, if I can just throw on to what you said, I think there were some public comments concerned about outbreaks in the CPS schools and from the medical. Panel we met with, uh, or some of us met with a couple um last week or maybe it was last week or two because it got time, time blurs. Um. They, they talked about almost all of those cases. I don't know if they could say for every single one. Um, they did, those infections did not occur within the school. And so when we hear about quote unquote outbreaks in the media from schools, there, there may be cases in the schools, but they're usually traceable to, to, to infection from outside. And so I think. That's where some of, I think the comments get a little bit muddled in terms of hearing about infections within schools. Most often than not, um, those infections are not happening within the school building.
Um, thank you. Nope, I, nope, you, that was perfect. I have uh, all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Um, were there any other questions from other board members?
I have a.
Go ahead, Gavin.
Okay, I had um, two questions. One, uh, and I'm sorry, I may have just missed this because I've got a bunch of stuff on my screen and I'm listening and reading at the same time. But I know a lot of the comments that we received um raised the question of um whether moving to hybrid when uh. When we may be nearing vaccination for teachers is, is a smart idea and um. So I would love to hear the latest that we have to the extent that we have any kind of knowledge about when we might expect. Uh, our teachers and other staff to be vaccinated.
So um, and I apologize, I was going to offer uh that update. I was so uh impressed.
So thank you.
Yeah, you didn't miss it. Um, so no um additional update than what um JT, um, the public health director shared at the last board meeting. Um, teachers, educators, we are still in the one B category. Um, the Village of Oak Park is still um doing their vaccination planning for one A. Uh, and um, we are working really closely uh with District two hundred, our nurses and the public health department. Uh, on our vaccination planning. Um, I would imagine just based on the number of. Um, staff members as well as educators that are in Oak Park. Um, and some of the other individuals that are in that one B category are um residents of our long-term uh care facilities. Um, uh, individuals that are over sixty-five uh that there would probably um, not be. Um, a situation where we would get through like all of those individuals, um perhaps until um sometimes like March, April, assuming that, that. Uh, move movement to one B is going to start uh relatively shortly. Um, because of the way that the vaccines are allocated uh to the states and the community. Uh, right now, each week, my understanding from listening to JT, they have not received um a steady allotment. Um, but they do know our counts. Um, they have the counts of staff uh that would need the, the vaccines. Um, and then we have been working closely on the planning. Um, but I would not. Imagine that, you know, if we were to wait until we go through our vaccine protocol. Um, and so far the two vaccines um from Moderna and from Pfizer, um, there's a two dose. Um, uh, to the protocol. Um, and one is a twenty-one day uh window. The second is a twenty-eight day window. Uh, so we would be looking probably close to um, uh, somewhere in the middle of third trimester.
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Kelly. It, I think that was an important point for me anyway. I know. We've been seeing in the news, the city of Chicago, the state of Illinois has been announcing, well, we're moving into one B. Very shortly. And then if you could read the fine print, the, the uncertainty around when we'll actually have the vaccines.
To get through um that entire group that is in the one B for Oak Park.
O- obviously hoping uh it's as soon as possible, but unclear. Um, the second question I had was, I was wondering if we could just go back to the slide that has the ventilation piece on it quickly. Sorry. Um, and Gina, I was hoping you could just explain a little bit more about the, this second bullet about. Um, sort of when under the circumstances under which we can get into the four to five air changes per hour range. And sort of this part about as weather allows.
Well, obviously we run the system, so we're increasing those air changes. But if the weather is negative ten, we don't want the dampers to be open a hundred percent because we'll freeze all of the mechanics in the building. So we basically have to watch the outside temperatures and we change it manually daily.
Okay, and so for example, like where we are right now, which is a fairly typical temperature for winter and in Oak Park. Are we at a place where weather would or would not allow um opening the dampers?
The answer to that is both. We wouldn't run it the entire day, but we do run it. That's when the two hours before comes in and then after the shift. And then that's where um, we start the system at six AM. So we would run it that way until about nine. And then that's when we can increase it even more by just um. Being the windows open or utilizing just the unit vents in the room and not the rooftop units and the HVC on the roof. So we have lots of different avenues. I mean, if we increased all of our mechanics to a hundred percent outside air, it would be, be freezing in the building.
Right, understood. And so I, it sounds like what you're saying, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is that the um. That recent path to zero sort of pegs four to six air changes per hour is like the, the target. It sounds like what you're saying is that for the winter barring sort of extremely cold weather, we'll generally be able to hit that four to six range. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I had a few questions, but first. Um, I just feel like we have to acknowledge the fact that. And maybe I should just speak personally, but as a community, we've been operating. Under the assumption that our February first target date was based on the metrics that, that we have. Been putting out to the community over and over again. Um, over the last ten months, which as of at least this morning are still on our website. Um, and this shift to following the guidance in the path to zero. Is, it is a huge shift and while it may make sense and at some point, you know, we can get there as a community. It is a major shift and I feel like we're um as a group, just kind of brushing over that and it's um. It's really upsetting because I, I think that from community members I've talked with, they've, they made their hybrid selections based on that, thinking. That they wouldn't be sending their kids back or asking the teachers to go back unless we hit certain metrics. And now. We're saying that we may be shifting our metrics, which again. Uh, you know, I'm not trying to, to throw any criticism at the guidance that's being put out and we do have to follow. The most up-to-date guidance, but it is different. And I don't feel like as a community, we've had time to digest that and really talk about what that would mean. Um, and at the very least, I think the surveillance piece and the saliva testing. That is not being recommended that the high school is using would be a really, really important metric to use to follow our asymptomatic spread. And have a pulse on what's going on, not only in our buildings, but in our community. And the, the pop-up site, while you know, it's great that it doesn't have a cost associated. Um, for the district, it's voluntary. It's essentially just another place to get tested, which if the Village of Oak Park thinks that that is. Necessary here. I, I have not talked to anyone recently that seems to have a, have trouble finding a place to get tested, but that could be wrong. I would be interested in. Um, Joseph Terry's opinion on whether or not we need another testing site, but. When I consider these two options, I'm wondering why we're not doing both. If one has no cost to the district. That seems like a no-brainer. And then if we have this option to do testing that we could require our students to do and ask our, our staff to do if they were willing. Uh, that I think would go a long way to reassure people um as we wait for the vaccine to come through. But without the surveillance, I, I'm really having a difficult time getting comfortable um. With this huge change in metrics. So I don't know, Jim, if you can talk about.
Uh Catherine, just to clarify, is your concern that the district would not receive the information um regarding the test results?
No, my concern is that it's, it's voluntary and it's, it's not a complete surveillance system. I mean, I listened to the high school meeting. Uh, the recording of the high school meeting where they discussed and weighed the pros and cons of the safeguard.
Right.
And. It makes sense to me that you have more information when you're testing all of your students and. Staff have the option to be tested. You know, generally. When people are coming into the buildings then and the turnaround is twenty-four hours for that result, you have a much better idea of if you have.
So your question is uh, why isn't the uh staff testing or requiring the test of all of our students and staff? Uh, I don't know that we're prepared to answer that question this evening. We, we have reached out to our attorney. Um, we should have that answer on uh Tuesday. But if there's um any concern that, you know, the contact tracing is not going to happen, I, I, I did not hear that from Jim. It's that the results would be sent um for positive cases to IDPH, not back to the district because it would be. Um, considered a medical test, which would get us into um a different um privacy standpoint. Um, but in terms of our being able to have the data directly, we would not have the data directly. Um, but when IDPH is doing, um, or the Village of Oak Park Public Health is doing any contact tracing. If there are any exposures, those individuals are, are contacted. So. Um, and Jim, I don't know if there's anything else that you would add to that. We will be.
Relies on people going to be tested though, because they have symptoms, because they think they've been exposed. That only catches people that are already in a situation where they think they have it or they know.
I hear your question. I think the question is more so.
Catherine, I think though, I'm sorry, I think the high school is voluntary too, though. They don't force anyone. You get a test to take home and you put it in a drop box. Nobody's there to.
Required for the students, it's voluntary for the staff.
And we'll, we'll have that information of whether or not we can require that. We don't believe that you can, um, but we will have the definitive answer on Tuesday night, Catherine.
And Dr. Kelly, I can answer your, your question real quick too. It's, when it, when it comes to um. The testing and, and the obstacles to testing, nobody wants to go wait in line in a car for two or three hours to get tested or have to go to a. Uh, you know, another clinic to get tested. You would have your time slot and your time slot would be accommodated. And, and the other piece of this is at the high school, you have a larger sample size. Um, so you know, I'd have to consult with the, with safeguard surveillance and say, okay. If, if we're doing this testing at Hatch and we have, you know, a restricted population there, we may not even be able to post those positive presumptions because we can, we can make, we can infer. Because of the small sample size, who is now presumptively positive. Um, so when that sample size increases because the building is larger, such as the high school, it's easier to, to kind of hide who has that presumptive positive result.
Yeah, from what I understand, safeguard said you needed a sample size of two thousand, which if three thousand of our students are coming back and it was voluntary for staff, we seem like we would meet that. You know, whether or not, I, I don't know why it would have to be disaggregated by building.
Well, because you, you have, you, you're, you're, each building is its own separate environment and we're, we're, you know, with related to staffing and how we implement control measures there. And where those levels are, that's kind of what I said back in the metrics piece is how, you know, the administrator's got to look at it school by school basis. At each piece. So to, to take that data as a whole for the district, yes, it's helpful, but it's not that helpful. We need, we would, we would prefer to have that building level information, but short of that, if we could just keep, get people tested, um, that's a step in the right direction.
Um, okay.
I think I have two other questions. I just might um count it on my uh memory, Catherine. It was the testing and then. Oh, the, the metrics, the report. Um. Uh, we, we have uh communicated to uh very, various leaders um regarding the report uh once it came out. And this is what I said to the board um and also to our ad leadership. Um, I, and, and I will say this to the community, I'm, I'm sure it does feel that we are, you know, changing the rulebook here. Um, because in many ways, you know, that's um exactly what, what's, what's happening, but you know, we do have to for. Um, this situation that we're in, this pandemic, uh, we do have to follow the, the science, the research. Um, similar to like what our state is doing. Um, uh, the state is moving our region back to uh tier two. Um, because the more we learn about um uh COVID by uh examining. Um, what, what's happening in terms of the science, the health, uh, there have been adjustments that are made. Um, so I definitely do apologize. It has also been the district's practice, and I don't know if Amanda wants to um speak to this. That we don't necessarily pull things down from the website, um, but there is a lot of um information in the weekly updates that we provide to the community. So, you know, in terms of uh COVID and the district's planning, I would really highly advise um everyone to use that weekly wrap-up. As the, the um, the, the best source of information. The information is there on the website. Um, but you know, like I said, if people are looking at um the information that was posted last October and still thinking that that. Um, was what we were looking at, I, I definitely do apologize. Um, but we do have to follow the guidance that's provided to us. Um, with the most updated guidance rather that's provided to us. Um, so, um, but that has been communicated. Um, January eighth, uh, January uh twelfth board meeting and again, uh, in the weekly update on January the fifteenth um to, to the community.
Yeah, and we do, um, just Dr. Kelly, just quickly, we do like an update center to your point. And I think especially because like. We've heard the calls for transparency around things that we've been doing related to the pandemic and planning and everything. So. I've really not tried to pull anything down and it's been helpful for us too, to be able to reference kind of like what's gone out and things like that. So. Our entire communication archive is dated on the website, like you can pull down by month and the metric section, you know, like. That definitely, and I think we were kind of like waiting to have this conversation um at the board table too. So what we did do and. As Dr. Kelly said last week was provide kind of that, I think I did link to the report in the communication last week. And linked to that on the website as well. So yeah, to Dr. Kelly's point, I think like always making sure to keep up with the weekly. I know it's a lot of information, but. Um, if you do want to reference anything like previously, it's all dated. Um, so. I would say pay attention to those dates as well. If you're pulling something up from October, um, it's possible things have been updated. So.
And for families that may um have elected hybrid, um, they, they can contact and Amanda will include this. And the weekly update, how parents can contact their building um principals to move to remote um regarding. Act members, um, you know, the health and the, the uh safety of our staff members as well of our students is definitely our top priority. Um, our staff members can contact um our HR department. Each case is individual. Um, and um, we, you know, I don't even know like the specifics of it, um, but they have had many um sleepless nights. Um, in the department of trying to, uh, you know, have those conversations. So. Um, again, this has not been um easy, I'm sure for our school board of volunteers. Um, and certainly our team has been attempting to work really tirelessly and uh quite frankly, a no-win situation here. Um, and I will conclude our special report. I already see that we're about fifteen minutes over and there are some items that are on the agenda. Um, so John, I will turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you. Um, and I, I will emphasize for the, the parents who do feel like that there, the metrics have moved around that. This is a novel coronavirus and we are following the science. Um, I don't think any of us are trying to hurt people or teachers or students. Um, and we are trying to track the science. Um, so I would encourage people to go look at the report and um. And it's some of the same metrics we were following earlier or the, 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 the. or the 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 group is provided some of the same metrics we were following earlier. So I think it's important to um to look at that. Um, okay, so then we are going to move to the uh uh item 3.1, which is the approval of the memorandum of understanding for hybrid learning. So if I could get someone to make the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Park District 97 approve the memorandum of understanding with the Oak Park Teachers Association.
Sorry, I thought we were going to hold off on questions on the MOU until we got to the MOU. Are we, can I ask a quick question about it before we vote on it?
What you can do is second the motion and then you can have brief discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll second the motion and uh and we welcome brief discussion. Um, my one question is just, I know uh that one of the things that's been raised a lot in comments we've gotten and certainly something we've talked about a lot as it as a district, both board and administration, is the question of when um what the standards are for when teachers seek accommodations to teach remotely or to not be in the buildings. And I uh I think there's, I think people's impressions of it are kind of all over the place. So it would be great to just hear from Gina or whomever about how the district handles those requests and what the standard is.
I I'm happy to answer. This is Gina. So um, teachers who are required to um remain at home, required to um quarantine, we are granting um accommodations. We're going through those today. Um, we look at these individually, individually. You have to look at the job role. You have to look at um everything that's going on within their job function as we're moving to a hybrid setting. Um, and these are ongoing. So as we move into a hybrid setting, might we notice some additional hybrid positions that your remote positions, yes, but we are working um with everybody and going through the full ADA process. And and again, we, it's taking a ton of time and um it's not an easy process, so.
Um, I don't know if that answers your question, Gavin. You're done. But I I also just wanted to comment that one of the sets of public comments that we got last week was about the teachers going home. And for those of you who haven't um read the MOU yet in the community, um, teachers are going to be leaving after students, after 10 minutes after helping the students exit the building. They have the opportunity. It's optional. It's at their own discretion. If they would like to leave, um, they're able to leave for the afternoons. Um, and I wanted to highlight that that was um a really important conversation we had with the OPTA. And um, we're appreciative of everybody's concern about safety and um also desire to make sure that entering and exiting the school with all of our students will be a safe process that uh will be supported by the teachers.
And Cheryl, I, can I uh chime in on the discussion? I um wanted to uh just publicly thank um those members um of the district's uh um support member, uh, Spurlock, uh, John Kim and Catherine Lebo, um, as well as some of the administrators, uh Gina Herman, uh, April Kaputa and uh Christine Zalaya. Did I leave anyone out, Gina? Uh, and Ebony Lofton, uh, to thank you for um the many, many, many hours um of uh this getting to this point.
Are we ready for the roll call?
I just, I I would like to say that as a member of the bargaining team, uh, I was in full support of this MOU with a February 4th start date when we were using the metrics again that we've been using for months and months. Um, also with the assumption that the the teachers would be either very.
Catherine, is there, do you have a question about the MOU? I'm I'm sorry, we're really tight on time, so.
No, I would just, I would like to be able to explain my vote. Should I do that after my vote?
Um, Cheryl, is that, is there, is there comments after voting or?
She has the right to make a comment, yep.
Now or after?
I would prefer you finish it now. So you said with the assumption.
Yes, with the assumption that we were still following the same guidance. And with the assumption that our our vaccines were on the horizon and, you know, we had a plan. And I understand again that the metrics and the science are changing. It happened abruptly toward the end of this process. Um, and you know, just as the district planned for metrics based on this, I I also am changing the way that I'm viewing um, the way that we're approaching this. And so unless we were able to say that we were going to be flexible with this date, um, or if we could put better surveillance to monitor what's going on at the building level, um, I will not be able to vote in favor of this.
Are we ready for the roll call?
I think so.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
And Lebo?
No.
Okay, then, um, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the return to school plan, uh, item 3.1.2.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park District 97 approve the, oh, it's not up there, but I can find it. Approve the return to school plan during COVID-19, during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lebo?
No.
And Bray?
Yes.
Okay, um, the next piece is item 3.1.3, the authorization to provide CNAs to the district.
I move that the Board of Ed.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park District 97 approve the administrative request to enter into a contract for certified nursing assistance CNA at a cost of approximately $60,000.
Second.
Bray?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Lebo?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes. Um, and then the final motion uh is the 2021 calendar changes.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park District 97 approve the 2021 calendar to reflect remote learning planning days on January 25th and January 26th and student school days to be held on February 4th and February 5th. The parent teacher conference dates will be moved to a later date in February. The changes are being made due to the transition from remote learning um to hybrid learning. That's my motion and then per the procedure, um, my comment on this is one of the things that was really important to the teachers was time for them to set up their classrooms. They haven't been in their classrooms since March. And these two dates that are being added as remote learning planning days are for them to have time in their classrooms to also go over safety plans in their buildings. And in the case of the middle school, to work on some of the um innovative curriculum and project uh planning that they're going to be doing.
We've got a second?
Second.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Lebo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna actually hand this off to Kisa because I gotta go. Sorry.
All right, um, so, and I'm guessing then Edmund, it's time for you to go. You guys have other meetings, correct? Um, so the remainder of this meeting will be to continue to read the public comments that we have received for today's board meeting. Um, Holly and Gavin, take it away. Thank you.
Make a request?
Absolutely.
As they're reading them, could they please read the name of the person first and then read the statement? That makes it so much easier for me.
Sure.
No problem, Cheryl.
Thanks for having to scoosh off early.
That's all right. You have work to do. Thank you.
Uh, the next comment is from Erica Shannon. Good evening. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Oak Park Teachers Association. Following tonight, I hope that all members of the D97 Board of Education, School Board and governing members of the D97 Administration who conduct these meetings will commit to holding these meetings in person while wearing masks and safely distancing from one another in solidarity to the school-based staff who have been ordered to report to the school buildings on Monday, January 25th, and the students who will do the same on Monday, February 1st. I would like to ask that in-person teaching and learning under the hybrid model be delayed just a little while longer, until which time as all D97 employees who want to have received, wanted, have received doses one and two of the COVID-19 vaccine and have waited the appropriate one to two weeks following the second dose required in order for the vaccine to reach its full potential beneficial effect. I also ask that before any return to in-person learning, regular weekly COVID-19 testing for all school staff and students be put into place as has been implemented in many other suburban school districts, including Oak Park's very own District 200. Last, during the worldwide deadly pandemic, I beg that D97 continue to work with immune compromised staff and staff with chronic health conditions to find creative solutions that would allow them to continue safely teach remotely from home, at least until they have received all components of the COVID-19 vaccine or after that, until their healthcare professionals advise them that it's safe for them to return to the building. This would allow these teachers to continue to teach and build relationships with the students that they love without having to resort to taking leave and necessitating hiring of long-term substitutes. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Erica Shannon, 4th and 5th grade orchestra teacher at Hatch, Irving Man and Lincoln Elementary. Matt Downs, dear members of the board, thank you for taking the time to read your own statement, your own statement regarding this special meeting as you consider to send staff and students back into buildings. Uh, meeting will be held virtually in order to protect the health and safety of our Board of Education, staff and community members. District 97 has decided to hold this meeting virtually using Zoom. Definition of hypocrisy. One, behavior that contradicts what one claims to believe or feel. Sincerely, Matt Downs. Savannah Heidloff. Sorry, my room just got really dark and I'm having trouble reading my notes. Um, Savannah Heidloff, good afternoon. I'm speaking today as a member of the Oak Park Teachers Association. I'm writing to you today to ask for the transition from remote to hybrid learning to be paused till all D97 staff who want it can receive their first and second doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. It's my hope that District 97 will provide a centralized location and specific date for this vaccine to be administered to staff and that the revised hybrid plan and calendar will allow for the vaccine to have maximum effectiveness in protecting staff, students and their families. The shift to hybrid learning from remote learning disrupts not only the connections and access that teachers have to their students, but the connections that students have with each other. Teaching to hybrid students and remote students simultaneously will be chaotic and confusing for all and especially isolating for remote learners. With remote learning, students move fluidly from whole group instruction to small group partner work, jigsaw activities and collaborative projects. With the current hybrid plan, much of the collaboration will not be feasible. Equity is one of the core tenants of District 97. I see my colleagues working so hard every day to provide enriching targeted instruction to their students. When I saw the breakdown of my remote and hybrid students, I realized that all but one of my uh, black indigenous people of color students chose remote. But COVID-19 has devastated our our black indigenous persons of color family over the last 10 months. So this isn't surprising that many families chose to stick with remote learning to keep their children and loved ones safe. My fear is that our remote learners will be isolated socially, emotionally and academically because the hybrid plan of teaching to two groups simultaneously is problematic and does not embody best teaching practices. I know that my 4th graders will notice this disparity and rightly question why some students are in the classroom and others aren't. Was the decision to move to the hybrid model based on 54% of all District 97 families or 54% of respondents? Will the racial breakdown in percentage of families who selected remote versus hybrid be available to the public? I hope the board and all stakeholders will consider the negative effects of shifting to the hybrid learning model right now. We're already 10 months into a pandemic, so why not take the time to do this right? Ensure that staff and students are safe and receive the best instruction that we're able to provide. Thank you for your time. Max and Leslie Weiss, dear Board of Education, I'm writing for you to reconsider moving into our our hybrid model now. I'd like you to think back to August when you decided to move our schools remote. Are you meeting your goals by moving into hybrid? What are those goals? As an educator in our district and a parent, goals drive my instruction. Why now? Are you creating an equitable environment by returning to hybrid? How many low-income and free-reduced students are coming to school? How equitable will our classes be in terms of race? Have you looked at the statistics? Why now? Is it safer for adults to be in the building? Does our staff feel safe? Our staff is close to being fully vaccinated. One B opens in Illinois next week. Staff will then need to receive two shots and wait a few weeks to be fully vaccinated. If we were coming back after spring break, our staff would be vaccinated. It'd be safer for everyone. Why now? Have you been honest with parents about the metrics before they signed up for a hybrid? Why are you changing the metrics now when you've already promised one thing? There's a new variant in Chicago. Have you considered how this will affect our students and staff? Why now? Some of our students will be back in the building and everyone's schedule will change. Our middle school students will lose at least four weeks of curriculum instruction with this plan. The weeks they are in the building will be projects, not curriculum. They will over less than in previous years because we are going back. Our 4th and 5th graders are losing their special area instruction completely and possibly our 3rd grade students too. All students will lose some special area instruction. Did we not pass a referendum valuing this instruction? Many of our elementary teachers run small groups. Now with the hybrid model, that will become impossible. What goals are you achieving by moving into our hybrid model? Or how are we meeting our original goals? I implore you to reconsider going back into the building now. Thank you, Leslie Weiss. Carolyn Nicola Cockis, sorry if I mispronounced that, to the D97 Board of Education Administrators and the Oak Park Community. I'm the mom of 297 students and a D97 teacher. As information about the 21 hybrid plan is released, there are many questions that have arisen. I hope all stakeholders will get direct, honest answers to the questions below and others raised by community members. One, why are community members not allowed to read their own public comments when technology allows for that? The tone and pace is lost when someone else reads your words. Two, why are we meeting virtually to discuss schools returning in person? Surely a hybrid plan to have the Board of Education, admin and select community members on site using mitigation protocols or the rest of those wishing to attend can do so virtually at the same time as possible, since we're asking schools to do that five days a week. Three, speaking of five days a week, if this plan is safe and successful, and for the record, I truly hope it is, it's safe to assume many or even most families who have opted to stay home will want to join the hybrid option in the third trimester. Would we then switch back to the AB plan? Has there been thoughtful consideration about disruptive? That will be for staff, families and most of the kids, most of all the kids. Number four, how are these new metrics being used, being justified? What's the reasoning behind using real village and suburban Cook County metrics as our guideline and then suddenly changing that when those current metrics? Those metrics currently say we should not return yet to in-person learning. Five, why are we not waiting until all teachers and school staff can be fully vaccinated on return? We've been told teachers are in the next group, one B and shots will be available soon. Why would we not wait to protect the teachers and the people they can spread it to, which still does include children in the community as a whole? Six, when will the safety guidelines be available to staff, families and the community so we know how many COVID cases will trigger classroom and school-wide quarantine quarantines or return to remote scenarios? What testing and contact tracing teams and protocols will be in place? Seven, are teachers being allowed reasonable accommodations to work, continue to work remotely? If they have underlying conditions or special circumstances, as they are in District 200 OPRF, is every effort being made to ensure all our dedicated expert staff, especially the most vulnerable, can work in safe conditions so we don't lose them? Eight, if staff become ill and unable to work or have to take leave to care for family members, how will we find time to vet and hire quality replacements? Nine, why has there not been any kind of town hall or public sharing time from our school nurses, teachers and staff? Not only those who have questions or concerns, but truly representative group of those being told to return despite valid and myriad concerns about the hybrid plan. Why are they not given a seat at this table in a district whose driving motivation is equity? 10, is the community, oh, community aware of what quote school is going to look like and feel like? Have they adequately been able to prepare the kids? This is not a return to school as it was. Beyond the mask-wearing, the millions of little things that make a classroom a community and a home away from home will not be safe or possible. No movement, no handsome materials, no decorations, no talking when you have your snack. Yes, that is an actual directive we're supposed to enact with children. The list goes on and on. Teaching to kids who have been away from their routines for 10 months and are being asked for strict safety protocols while simultaneously teaching kids on Zoom, it's going to be tough on everyone. Even allowing for adjustment time, it's a big ask for everyone, most of all the students. 11, what's happening with specials in the hybrid schedule? 12. That concludes. This is from Jen Stringfield. Um, hi there. I urge the board to consider a way to ensure teachers who are not comfortable returning in person to be able to continue to teach if not you have been vaccinated and neither of their families, regardless of their risk factors. At the board meeting on October 13th, I heard parents begging to not lose their teachers and one named was mentioned, one name was mentioned over and over again. This is Walsh Kelly. In spring last year, my second grader gave up on school. He essentially became agoraphobic and refused to engage with his teacher classmates in any way. He agreed to give 3rd grade a try and Miss Walsh Kelly, Calais, ensured he has thrived. Please don't take away the teacher that brought back my child's love of learning. I opted to continue him in remote learning so we could. I opted to continue him in remote learning so we could stay with Ms. Walsh Kelly. To be clear, I'm in favor of returning to school. 2 of my boys will be returning in person. We cannot force teachers to risk their and their families' lives with no say in the matter. We can get back in-person learning with their input and safe, safely. Please, our teachers mean the world to our community and kids. Please let them have a say. Thank you, Jen Stringfield. Jennifer Costanzo. Members of the Board, we're saddened to learn that the flexibility afforded to students for in-person learning versus remote has not been provided to our devoted and hardworking teachers. As with students' families, there are no doubt teachers of high risk or with family members that are high risk. We've just learned that after all the rework of the hybrid model to maintain current teachers, our children may still lose their teacher due to family circumstances. This is unlikely a unique case within the district. It seems that in order to retain an excellent teacher and likely teachers, flexibility should be exercised for this temporary pandemic situation, using our case as an example, the class has a teaching assistant. If circumstances allow, the teaching assistant can be the in-person instructor proctor as the teacher continues to teach safely from home, using all the technology available in the classrooms as demonstrated by D97 and systems currently being utilized on a daily basis. We are in the mindset that until it is safe for us all to go back in person, we should continue to all stay remote. Consideration of metrics should take into account the more contagious variant strain expected to take hold in the very near future. It would be incredibly short-sighted to force teachers into a decision to leave the district or retire early only to have school return to remote learning due to an increase in community spread or outbreaks within the district. D97 has fantastic teachers. Instruction is happening and is consistent. The focus should be finding a way to address those students whose families cannot be remote with them, and to maintain consistency for all students in the teaching schedule and model. If nothing else, the past year has taught us to be flexible in all aspects of our lives. The year has also required us to learn respect for other person situations, as well as trust that others are making decisions that won't harm us. Losing a teacher at this time of the year would undoubtedly harm multiple students without an acceptable reason. The lack of flexibility, respect and trust is not a reason our student should be told for losing their teachers. Jeffrey Roberts. Emily D'Agostino. The hallmark of a healthy community is the extent to which everyone is willing to share some of the sacrifice for the benefit of the whole. This year, that sacrifice has been born by many. It has not been born by all. Your plans and decisions to move forward with giving children an option to safely return to schools have felt for the first time like more of a shared sacrifice. It's offered a glimmer of hope for my family, thank you. My children who have stayed home or gone to childcare settings to do their e-learning where childcare workers are taking risks to care for them to help protect educators who continue to work remotely, thrilled to learn that they might finally be able to return to the school they love and to meet their teachers in person. They're bored and totally disengaged with e-learning. They complain every day of headaches. They cannot remain on task without full-time support from an in-person adult. They're socially and mentally depleted. It's impossible for them to stay focused, and I don't blame them. They've been forced to do something no kids have done before, and it's terrific that they are learning resilience and how to get through hard times and profound loss. Does it make what we're asking them to do right or appropriate? It is neither, enough is enough is enough. I won't continue to ask them to elearn for a full school day, regardless of what decision is made today and how you all decide to move forward. Last week in remote learning, my child learned about Martin Luther King Jr. They learned about spreading love, not hate. They learned about how when things get bad, love keeps going. Now, one of my kid's teachers is communicating that they may not return to in-person teaching because the risk is too high for them and their family. I understand their fear and empathize with how hard this must be. I don't want anyone to get sick, especially on the heels of the lesson about Dr. King. It will be interesting to find a way to talk with my kids about the decisions some teachers are making to quit because things got harder for them, even as vaccines will be available to teachers in a matter of days, and even as science shows that there is a safe way to protect both kids and their teachers in the classroom. When did self-interest overtake the values we claim to have as liberal-loving democratic community? What are we teaching our kids when we choose our individual good over the collective good? My heart breaks for my kids who have lost so much this year and have sacrificed so much. I take comfort knowing that we as their parents will provide them consistency and continuity and certainty and stability and unconditional love and support, and still I mourn that so many other adults in their lives, adults whom we have asked to put our trust in as educators, will not provide these things. Soon, the first friends our family made in Oak Park will be moving out of state. Several neighbors have pulled their kids from our local public school, sent them to private school. The first friend my child made at her school is leaving for a private school next year, all because the public schools in Oak Park have failed them. Our community remains far from healthy. I do believe that offering the option of in-person learning for kids like mine who need it is a step in the right direction, a step toward a more sacred, more shared sacrifice and a stronger community. And I do believe it can be done safety for all, or I never would, I would never support it. Thank you for moving forward with the plan that gives our kids the option to return to their schools. Here's to more hope to come and less loss, especially for our kids in 2021. Emily D'Agostino. Miss Vote. I am speaking to you as a member of the OPTA. Please wait until staff members are vaccinated before asking us to return to the buildings. Please, 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 that is all, thank you. Amy Vote, Lincoln Longfellow. And with that, I turn it over to Gavin.
Thanks Holly. This first comment is from Joshua Tatro. Apologies to everybody whose name I might mispronounce. To the Board and District 97 Leadership Team, as a spouse of an OPTA member, I bore witness to many problematic soundbites during January 12th's Board meeting, but perhaps the most disheartening and disappointing moments were actually the seconds of sobering silence at the conclusion of our district's leadership presentation, the time theoretically allotted for board feedback and questions. Am I to understand that after District 97 Leadership presented the plan, the entire Board had absolutely zero thoughts to express? As the husband of an OPTA educator and a former teacher myself, the number of questions that immediately surfaced in my own mind were virtually unending. For instance, how will building leadership address students who routinely refuse to wear masks the entire day and/or engage in other behavior that endangers their peers? What of district leadership's assertion that up to 10 additional staff must be hired in order to provide the specials and enrichment instruction needed to achieve in-person classes district-wide? And if district leadership no longer views community spread as an end-all-be-all indicator for reopening schools, then at what level of community and/or intraschool spread do they plan to set as a hard limit for discontinuing in-person instruction? Sadly, the response from our Board members, the stewards and gatekeepers of district policy and resources writ large in the face of all these unknowns, nothing. Not a single word, question or concern about the presumably hundreds of new procedures that will be required to ensure the health and safety of students, teachers and staff. And this is to say nothing of district leadership's touting of the new schools guidance document provided by the Brown School of Public Health as some sort of silver bullet for addressing community concerns over the dangers of returning to in-person instruction. Indeed, having now examined said document myself, there are as many questions as answers at play, but more importantly, I have serious concerns about the district's ability to implement some of the most basic tenets of the Brown School of Public Health's plan for quote "pandemic resilience in the face of high community spread." To start, the authors of this document begin by emphasizing that trust is one of the most essential components of any in-person instructional arrangement during the current pandemic, stating quote, "Trust is a question of how school leaders make decisions, how well they do it incorporating educators, paraprofessionals and other staff in decision-making processes, how well they do it communicating around decision-making, and how other decisions include an aligned focus on the health and safety of everyone in the building, students but also educators, paraprofessionals and other staff," unquote. Leaving aside the demonstrable fact that district leadership has yet to communicate what all of the daily routines and procedures for in-person learning will actually entail to its own educators, as well as the community at large, there has also as yet been zero definitive disclosure regarding how the district will both specifically monitor and communicate levels of intraschool COVID spread and transmission to its staff and the public. If trust is the fundamental to the successful implementation of the Brown School of Public Health's reopening framework, then I cannot help but think that D97's current proposition for in-person instruction is seriously flawed, if only due to district leadership engaging that time. Next comment is from Angela Tofara. Dear D97 School Board and Oak Park Community, teachers need accommodation too. Now is the time to admit a mistake was made and corrected before it cannot be undone. As we have seen many times in the last year, we have to pivot, change, adjust our plans and expectations, including regarding the education of our smallest community members. Yes, a great many parents offered that a number one priority was keeping our children at the same teacher, but it is not our only priority. We cannot all expect to get our first priority or that we wouldn't agree to sacrifice one of our priorities for the collective good. If we only look at the preference of our students and families and offer no accommodation to our teachers, then we have our priorities gravely wrong. Some of our students' education is desperately dependent on in-person interactions, but not students can or will, but no students can or will return now. Students are not more important than teachers. Please correct course now and offer those teachers in need accommodation to work from home and teach our students who will also be at home. Also, please advocate strongly and prioritize getting our teachers who can and will be returning sooner to the classrooms vaccinated promptly. Sincerely, Angela and Missay Tofara, parents of bi-school student. This is from Ruby DeJani. As a member of OPTA, I am writing to you today to express my concerns regarding the reopening plans. As ever, I am proud to serve the Oak Park community and I am fully committed to ensuring our students' educational well-being. In that spirit, I respectfully request that the Board of Education should consider the voices of staff regarding the health risks that our students, faculty and families will be exposed to if District 97 chooses to return in person. 1. We should wait until employees have been able to receive the first 2 doses of the COVID vaccine and have waited the appropriate time for it to be effective. 2. I also ask that accommodations be met for all staff who require it. Having lost my grandmother and close family members to COVID-19 this summer, I would hate for even one family to have to go through that experience. 3. After learning that across District 97, majority of our BIPOC families have opted for remote learning, another concern I have is that the conversation started with the need to return to some type of in-person due to equity concerns and to support our most struggling students. However, are we really creating an equitable environment by returning to hybrid? How equitable will our classes be in terms of race? What will classroom spaces look like? How will our BIPOC students feel? I ask that you take this very seriously and think about the message that is being sent. Best regards, Ruby DeJani Brooks Middle School. Next comment is from Rebecca Ward. First, I want to thank the Board for your hard work and dedication during this challenging time. I have a kindergartner and 3rd grader who are signed up for hybrid learning. I'm hoping that in returning to school, they will not be on Zoom and iPads for in-person learning time. This is not good for them developmentally and will never be used for kindergartners and sparingly for 3rd graders during a regular school year. I understand that teachers have the challenging task of live streaming classes to virtual students while teaching in person, and hope they are given the guidance and support from the district to be able to do mostly non-tech, non-screen teaching and learning during the morning for kids who are physically present in the classroom. Kindergartners should not be doing seesaw activities instead of paper and pencil and manipulators if in-person. Although I understand that hybrid school will not look like the regular school we know from the past, please explain to parents what the school day will look like, delivery and instruction methods and how that varies by grade, since technology is much more challenging and provides less valuable instruction for younger ages, so that we can make informed decisions about sending our children to school in person. If our kids are going to stare, to be staring at screens for several hours, which is from a different location, we need to know that in advance. Next comment is from Erin Jacobson. Dear Board of Education, as a District 97 Elementary School Special Education teacher and member of the Oak Park Teachers Association, I'm writing with hope that you consider stalling the hybrid plan for several very important reasons. Before I begin, I wanted to thank anyone who has been a part of the difficult and tedious process of creating a hybrid plan. I appreciate your work and efforts. Do not want to minimize how difficult and exhausting this must have been. I know there is no ideal hybrid or remote plan that will work for everyone. However, the health and safety of our students, teachers and staff should be the most important factor in deciding whether or not we are going to go through with this plan on February 1st. The current hybrid plan is extremely disruptive for learning. This transition is an overwhelming task for our teachers, staff and students to accomplish during this winter. Our classroom communities have had several months to create connections and routines despite the challenges of remote learning. Connections and routines are key ingredients that our young learners need in order to be successful. Severely changing our routines in the middle of the school will cause our classrooms to need to rebuild connections in a new way and create brand-new routines. At the start of the school year, it can take months to achieve a sense of community and routine. The hybrid plan is asking students to recreate their sense of community and routine in a way that they have never been asked before. Our students have never experienced having 3 core subjects stuffed into several hours. Our 2 students who are exhausted by midday will be attending live remote specials all stuffed into the afternoon. Our 3 to 5 students will be unable to connect live with their specials teachers and instead will be asked to work independently most of the afternoon. Our co-taught and resource students with individualized education plans will continue to receive their interventions remotely. This is because our small groups have students from multiple classrooms. Therefore, it would be unsafe and difficult due to social distancing requirements to meet in person. Some hybrid students in the instructional classroom will continue to attend their general education classrooms remotely as well. Our hybrid students will need to eat their snacks silently in a room 6 feet away from one another. Windows will need to be open at least 3 inches in each classroom to improve ventilation with temperatures near or below freezing for at least the next month or 2. Teachers will continue to use Zoom and Google Meets for both hybrid and remote students so we can continue our small group work. Students' work will continue to be on their iPads because we can't share materials, turn physical assignments in or move around. In other words, the way that we will be presenting material and asking kids to interact with it is no different than our current remote learning model. Although the above aspects of the hybrid plan are not ideal, our teachers and staff will rise to the occasion and work with what we've been dealt as we always do. However, I ask that the hybrid plan that will disrupt our students' school experience is stalled until it is safer to return. Asking student, teachers and staff to be together in an indoor space for 4 to 5 hours during this stage of the pandemic is unconscionable. Between Cook County's case counts, updated research on aerosols, updated research on school transmissions and the new strain of COVID-19, it is unbelievable that its hybrid plan is actually safe. Teachers are beginning to have the opportunity to get vaccinated. Spring and warmer, more comfortable weather nearing as well. Although it isn't an ideal situation, remote learning is allowing our students' education to continue. More importantly, has kept us all safe. For now, it is the safest option. I would hope that the Oak Park Community Board of Education and District 97 Administration would care enough about their educators and students' health to stall this plan. Next comment is from Laura Berrios Best. Laura Best, by parent. Good afternoon, please reconsider delaying the start of hybrid plan. Good afternoon, please reconsider delaying the start of hybrid plan. COVID nineteen is still prevalent and our teachers, staff and children are at risk. Some might think it's time to send them back to in-person learning, but speaking as a mother of a child with an I E P on the autism spectrum. Who is falling behind on his goals, I prefer to have him and my family healthy over getting him back to school in person. The hybrid plan could be affecting our neighbors who are teachers and some families will no longer have a choice to keep their children home. Because now their employer requires them to come in because school is an option again. I realize that our teachers and staff are not able to have a choice either. Teachers and staff members have families and are at risk of getting themselves or their loved ones sick. Let's wait until more people are vaccinated, please. Thank you. This next comment is from Stephanie Swarth. Dear D ninety seven B O E members and community. I'm a professional educator in District ninety seven and a member of O P T A speaking as an individual. I was very disheartened and discouraged to learn the board would be continuing to hold meetings virtually, quote, for the safety of the board and community. While simultaneously ending, sending educators and students back into the buildings. Anyone who has ever attended a B O E meeting at the administration building knows that that building in particular is much more, let me emphasize that, much more equipped than most, if not all of our classrooms to socially distance at six feet. The tables and padded chairs are on wheels. The movable wall could provide extra space, a microphone from the recent purchase could be used. Even half the board or admin could be remote and half in person to model what the classroom will look like in our proposed hybrid plan. You could show the community what the experience of remote students will be like and show solidarity with your educators by holding a meeting like a class in person while one or more of you. Monitors a chat for the remote members and community. In addition, there were eight days to make these arrangements for seven members, one secretary and maybe a handful of administrators. This is of course, assuming everyone came in. It would be even less if it was hybrid or partially remote. Our educators received 10 days notice to make similar arrangements for themselves, their families and their classes, which consisted of 20 plus students. At the elementary level and over 100 students for most educators at the middle schools. I can hardly imagine the logistics of making this change to be even the slightest bit insurmountable. I hope you will genuinely consider making the necessary changes to move to in-person meetings. In addition, I would like to ask that you please urge the administration to actually work with our educators to find safe solutions to the needs of those who are immunocompromised. I have been told and dearly hope it is inaccurate, that 200 plus requests were made and mostly denied. In fact, many are still in the process of review with only five days remaining until we return on site. For example, I was under the impression that ISBE changed language that will allow educators to teach from home. While in-person students are monitored by a substitute or other supervisor. I would imagine this to be a simple solution and I personally know educators who districts made this, whose districts made this happen for them. I hope this solution was seriously considered. I still feel that fear that educators being forced to choose between their lives and their livelihoods and I find it to be inhumane. Without doubt, it could have a serious impact on the continuity of instruction from professional educators to our, for our students. I would like to end by reminding the community and the members of the board that the experiences of educators are those of our students. The working conditions of our educators are the learning environments of our students. Therefore, you cannot put students first or forefront or center if educators are continually put last. As long as our educators are feeling micromanaged and untrusted as professionals, there will continue to be disunity and mistrust in D ninety seven. After watching today's inauguration, I hope we can begin looking to find more commonalities and become one united school district. United for our students, united with our educators and united as a community. This next comment is from Kristin Kelleher. Thank you for the commitment to safely reopening our schools. It's clear that there has been a great deal of time and energy put into this thoughtful plan. It's my understanding that the current plan eliminates or significantly reduces the elementary specials and I'm hoping this can be reconsidered. For most of our kids, the specials teachers are the only teachers they've ever met in person. And I think this continuity is especially important right now. I know art classes are favorite for many students and believe it should be regarded with some priority. As we know, art can play an important role in supporting emotional well-being through creative expression. I appreciate the opportunity to share this feedback and all the hard work of the board and faculty. Thank you. This next comment is from Kate Radling. Good afternoon. Thank you for taking my comment. Please accept my deep appreciation for serving our community on an elected board that I believe has some of the most difficult and also most important work there is. Navigating the typical school system decisions in our time is tough enough and now the pandemic too. I'm writing today to ask to change my survey response. I have a third by an eighth Julian grade student in the district. And I answered the survey in a way that would allow the most flexibility for my family and not what I believe is in the best interest of our community. It's tough to break these habits for sure. I had not also considered the ramifications on families with work situations that could be adversely affected by school reopening. Should an employer who accommodated a work schedule or location to allow a family to stay safe? A change in access to school could lead to that employer changing that allowance. Somewhat to what the district is requiring of teachers and staff now. I believe that committing to staying fully remote until such time that a majority of our teachers and staff are opting in should be the starting point of our community decision. Recognizing that information and conditions are changing day to day, new strains, case numbers, et cetera. Fully vaccinated staff and faculty also seems a minimum standard of care. And since we still believe that vaccinated people can possibly still spread COVID, we should be vaccinating their families as well. Thank you again for your consideration to remain remote until our staff can truly return safely. This next comment is from Jonathan Campbell. My name is Jonathan Campbell, the father of Henry Campbell, who is a third grader at Bi. It is simply too early to require teachers to be back in school in person and also expect children to return. Most teachers are category one C, which gives them no priority in immunization. The large majority of teachers cannot access the vaccine for COVID yet, and the same is true for the parents of their students. I'm not opposed to the vaccine for COVID. I plan to get it as soon as it's available. Right now, due to distribution problems, we simply do not know when teachers or the families of Oak Park will be vaccinated. It is outrageous to greatly raise the exposure of teachers and the families of Oak Park to this potentially deadly virus when the vaccine is not even available for most people. All of us are tired of self-isolation, but this decision must be changed. Thank you. That's a duplicate. Next comment is from Emily Culbertson. Greetings, Board of Education. Thank you for your diligent work in bringing a hybrid model to District ninety seven with so many factors to balance. I strongly urge the board to explore and adopt a coronavirus testing system for teachers, staff and students. Testing is not a substitute for masking ventilation and social distancing, but it does add a layer of protection, especially for returning teachers. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Carolyn Delia. As a member of the O P T A, I wanted to make sure that I expressed my thoughts on this very important matter. Teachers in other districts are being vaccinated as we speak. Teachers in Oak Park will soon receive their vaccines if they wish to. With this amazing opportunity approaching quickly, I'm confused as to why we as a district are rushing to put students back into classrooms. I have read the literature that has been shared by the district about the structures in place for opening the schools. In the last few days, two alarming pieces have been released. One report by NBC News stated that the hospitalization rate for children has increased over 800% in recent weeks. Another article stated that teachers are more likely than other professions outside of healthcare workers to become infected with COVID. All of this at a time when Europe is closing their schools again due to the new variant that has taken over there. This variant is on our continent, in our states and cities, 70% more contagious. Our own experts say that this variant will be the dominant variant in the United States by March. Knowing this, would it not be better to wait for the opportunity to fully vaccinate staff to best protect our communities, especially their most vulnerable? And the last comment is from Elizabeth Chu. To the District ninety seven Board of Education, as a member of the Oak Park Teachers Association, I ask that you delay the start of hybrid in-person learning until all teachers and school personnel are vaccinated. Delaying the start date is not possible, then please consider providing remote teaching opportunities for staff members. Who are considered high risk or have immediate family members who are considered high risk. Many teachers, including myself, feel that we have to make an impossible decision. We love our students, we want the best for them. We long for the day when we can be together in the classroom. However, teachers and/or those who have immediate family members who are at higher risk for health complications have very real and valid concerns about returning to in-person teaching. Especially with the new more transmissible variant of the virus that federal health officials believe will peak by March first, if we do not strictly comply to mitigation efforts now. Dr. Fauci said, quote, "The cavalry is on the way. Now that we see the end in sight, now is the time to double down," unquote. Our district was one of the first ones to transition into remote learning at the start of this pandemic. Dr. Kelly administrators and the board followed the most up-to-date information and took the necessary precautionary measures to ensure that our students, staff and community remained healthy and safe. We ask that you do the same to double down to ensure that our students, staff and their family members stay safe and healthy. Thank you for your consideration, Elizabeth Chu, teacher at Percy Julian Middle School.
Thank you Gavin and Holly and to all of the community members who submitted their public comments. Is Michael still present? I'm not, I don't have the, does anybody have a meeting agenda?
Next thing on the agenda is to adjourn.
Okay, if there are no further comments or questions, we will adjourn at five thirty-three P M. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.